The January tenth regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning, no, we're not there. The January tenth twenty nineteen regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Here.
All members are here this evening. Could we have a motion for adoption of tonight's agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? Moving on, consent calendar, we have two items tonight. These are draft action minutes of November fifteen twenty eighteen and November twenty nine twenty eighteen. Is there anyone here who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Could we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Oral communications. Anyone here who would like to address the commission on any item not on tonight's agenda? It looks like we have one taker. If you would step to the podium, please, looks like a familiar face and most people will know you for, but for the audience at home, could you please identify yourself?
Okay, Ray Miller. Brisbane resident. And I just have a question for the commission and maybe for the staff, too. It's curiosity as to why the workshop on the, I assume, the adopted general plan amendment JJ is moved into the large conference room, which means it's out of view of the television audience? And I'm just wondering why that is necessary? Why wouldn't it be also something that the public, the TV public would be interested in?
And I'll actually address it right away, Ray. First of all, initially, the workshops were a product of John Siewicki and myself having a discussion about bringing all the commissioners, we have a lot of new commissioners, up to the highest level of familiarity with items that may fall on our plates in the coming years. And staff has generously spent a lot of time giving us these workshops. And it really was just intended going over familiarity with items and names and codes. And there was nothing particularly unusual about it. It was simply some things that may not have fallen in what we're given as a planning commissioner's handbook. That being said, I understand there are some members of the public have also seen this on our agenda and said, what are you talking about? So with and acknowledging that Brisbane has a population that like to be involved and that you might indeed have interest in some of the forthcoming workshops, these will now be televised. So it will address what you're asking because understanding that some of the things that may come before us, they will be large projects or big determinations in the next two years that the public might want to be involved. And you might want to have some of the same information that we're going to get. So they will be televised. And I hope that that serves the public and any of your curiosities. But we'd also like to have you here because then if you have any questions, you could also possibly, or suggestions, bring them up to us. So thank you for coming tonight. Staff, do you have anything you want to add on that?
No, again, the point was to create a more informal learning environment for the commissioners. These typically workshops on things that are in a general interest to the commission. And felt that setting was a little more conducive for a conversation. But again, the location, the venue, it's all up to the commission's discretion. So this is a point of order, tonight's workshop will not adjourn to the large conference room, we'll have it in here.
Correct.
You may want to make note that change to the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Because it was noticed as being in the conference room. But I would suggest you actually readopt the agenda with that change noted for the record.
Okay, so do we have any commissioners who'd like to weigh in on this?
Well, not on that, but I just want to seek further clarification. So if we were to have any other meetings in a large conference room in the future, would those meetings be televised or we can have all meetings here now?
No, they won't be televised there. So if you want them on the record for the television audience, they'll be in the chambers here in this standard meeting format.
Okay.
Okay, so if we could rememorialize the agenda with one change of the workshop being held in these chambers, could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the aforementioned change.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, thank you very much. I have no written communications tonight, so we'll move on to new business. We have tonight a public hearing. This is general plan amendment GPA dash two dash one eight. This is an amendment to the Brisbane general plan. Let's just start with the staff report and it'll all become more clear.
Yes, thank you. Give me just a couple of seconds, I'm going to dim the lights so the audience can see too. Thank you. This application is to update the community health and safety element, or safety element, which is one of seven mandatory elements of the city's general plan. It's been initiated to incorporate the previously adopted local hazard mitigation plan and I'll refer to that as the LHMP for short and incorporate that into the safety element. It's being done to comply with state assembly bill twenty one forty. That bill requires local jurisdictions to either cross-reference the LHMP into the safety element or to include the LHMP language specific to that bill as part of the safety element. So either by reference or included entirely. And that's to be able to be eligible for disaster relief funding. So the proposal is to include the LHMP into the safety element by reference only. So I provided some background in the written agenda report and I won't repeat all of that here. But I'll just summarize a couple of legislative items that have prompted this proposed action. First, the LHMP stems from the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And that authorized the assistance to local governments in the implementation of pre-disaster hazard mitigation measures. And that's in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage and destruction. The state later adopted Assembly Bill twenty one forty, which added provisions specifying what is to be included in the LHMP and required linkage between the local jurisdictions LHMP and the safety element of the general plan for that funding eligibility. In twenty fifteen, a coalition of San Mateo County cities, and this jumped past two thousand and five. That was the first after the federal act. But then in twenty fifteen, a coalition of the San Mateo County cities and special districts embarked on an update of the San Mateo countywide hazard mitigation plan. Now it was completed in that in twenty sixteen. Each member city or district participated in the update and adopted their respective local sections. And then it was collectively approved by FEMA and the CAL- OES, or California Office of Emergency Services. Brisbane City Council adopted that update in September of that year. Ongoing amendments to the plan are scheduled for five-year intervals. So the next is scheduled for a couple of years from now. Terms of procedures, so the, we adopt the LHMP into the safety plan, as I mentioned, either by reference or including it entirely. And then we submit proof of that, of council adoption. So that's included in their draft resolution to CAL- OES and that enables the funding. Since Brisbane's LHMP is part of a larger countywide hazard mitigation plan and it contains greater detail than is typically provided in a general plan, the proposed amendment incorporates the LHMP by reference, so that's the reason for doing that. To do that, staff has provided draft explanatory text and new policy and program language within the emergencies preparedness section of the element. That's shown on this slide and it was included in your report, of course. And as a reference to that is included also in city council's resolution. And then on a related note, the emergency operations plan, or EOP, is also referenced in policy one forty eight. And the EOP provides a detailed plan, a roadmap, for the city's readiness, response, and recovery in the event of an emergency. Following on policy language from one forty eight, program one forty eight B is also shown with clarifying revisions to the EOP. So that's been reworked slightly, but not significantly. And that's provided in your paper document. I didn't put that whole, it's a rather long program, so I didn't put the whole thing up here on the slide. So finally, the proposed amendments are discreet and do not impact other sections of the safety element or other elements of the general plan. So in closing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to city council to adopt the draft update of the community health and safety element, the adoption of the resolution GP two eighteen. So essentially, in brief, if I could sum it all up, this is essentially a procedural action that you would be taking. It's not really looking at the substance of the LHMP. That's already been adopted. We'll adopt another one in a couple of years. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Questions? Cindy?
No.
No? Okay. Just for clarification, because part of our packet included the San Mateo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. That was in twenty fifteen, correct? It stands to be updated in five years, roughly five years, or sooner.
Right.
From what I read. Because there's a lot of information, anyone at home, if they were there and read through it, there's a lot of things pertaining to Parkside, the Baylands, lots of different things in there, which today draw lots of questions. So I just wanted you to clarify that the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the San Mateo County one, has nothing to do with what we're approving tonight, other than that was already approved. It's provided for informational purposes.
Right, the LHMP is informational, only that is correct.
Okay. All right. No one else? Okay, so this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to address the commission? Lovely, we have a taker. Again, same face, same name.
Here as well.
Our former mayor, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I think you were correct in raising the issue you just raised because clearly there are a number of statements made about a variety of things in Brisbane, which are out of date, which everybody knows. And it might be worthwhile considering whether it is possible to update those things without interrupting the whole process of the county plan. I don't know, because it does give the implication of things which are clearly obsolete. So it might be worth asking that question as to whether it could be updated so it makes more sense as to things that have now happened. So that's my first comment, just in response to yours. The second, I'm a little bit curious as to the process that was used in putting this plan together. It doesn't seem as if CCG, that is the City County Association of Governments, which is a group of elected officials, was involved in this process. At least it's not referenced at all in anything that I read. And so that leads me to ask the question, so was this sort of an ad hoc coalition for this one purpose? Or why didn't it go to CCG? Because it seems to me it's the sort of thing that that's what CCG was set up to do. So it's kind of a question, I guess, the staff has to answer, but of course has to go through the chair. So, thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
So the, what you have before you is just Brisbane's section, if you will. So it's our local portion and each other jurisdiction has their own local portion. There is a section that I looked at online that's embedded within the larger document of the countywide plan that lists all the various agencies. And I believe CCG would have been in that, but I can't, I can't recite. It was a very long laundry list and so I don't think they would have essentially looked over an agency that should have been included in this. And this also, I might also mention that this went to CAL- OES and FEMA and they have approved of it as well. So it's been thoroughly vetted in that way. And yes, there are some descriptive items in here that are out of date, but they don't materially affect the content of the plan. And so if you wanted to put a suggestion to council along with this, that they consider an update sooner, but I believe this would be a very costly endeavor when we're just a couple of years out to undertake on our own versus using the resources available through the countywide effort. So it'd be really a city council decision. But to keep in compliance, I think I'd recommend that you move this on with a recommendation and if you have some other, something to add.
Again, just to clarify, too, that the, I guess, whether it was CCG, typically for these kind of issues, I'm just looking online, that the County Office of Emergency Service is the one who's responsible for coordinating countywide preparedness, response, and protection services and activities for incidents and disasters. And they were basically the lead agency for the preparation of that document. Again, the fact that it was, there is, again, an individual annex for each city. Each city had the ability to participate in the preparation of that review of those materials, whether or not that would have been, you know, redundant with CCG or whether, you know, basically the Office of OES provided that overview and then the individual cities had the opportunity to comment on the specific parts. That's my read of how this was handled as opposed to through CCG as a body. Because each council had to adopt these annexes, too. So that's just the way the structure of the organization, apparently, from the planning side.
So might it be appropriate that we just make a recommendation to the council that in the future this perhaps be passed before CCG?
That really doesn't, CCG doesn't have any legal authority over the city of Brisbane and I wouldn't recommend that the city of Brisbane cede that authority to, or somehow. I'm not sure the benefit added to Brisbane of having our individual annex reviewed by CCG.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting for approval as much as input or suggestions.
I guess you can. It sounds like there's a certain structure that the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services drives that. I mean, you can make advisory comments if that's, I'm not, I'm not seeing the value added, frankly, of CCG's direct participation if they don't participate already. But you can certainly make that recommendation to the council, there's no harm in making that recommendation.
Well, and perhaps it could just be framed that they consider whether it would be beneficial to seek input from CCG, which is framing it a little differently. And they could then just discuss it and they might find, yes, it would be beneficial. And they might find, no, there's no reason to. But it would at least open that door a little bit. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay, discussion, commissioners? Napolé?
Well, I think the CCG point is interesting. But then I kind of looked at John's guidance, that the County Office of Emergency Services seems to be the leading authority there. But I don't see any harm with kind of inquiring a little bit more. I'm thinking other cities might have done that as well. So maybe we just don't have all the background information to how. Because in reading the background information, I didn't, that wasn't very clear to me.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to getting further input from CCG or any other group that, you know, we think might be, or, you know, cities might, think might be helpful. But I think I'm pretty fine with adopting the resolution as is, but I'm not opposed to any additional recommendations.
Okay. Commissioner Gooding?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Patel?
Me either.
Okay. All right, so that being said, do we want to add the caveat about CCG? And if in fact council says this is unnecessary, then going forward, there's no problem with it, they can just say it's irrelevant.
So you're recommending that as separate, a separate motion or action from the recommending the general plan amendment, correct? You're not embedding that recommendation into your GPA? Is that what you're?
No, just making a suggestion to council that they consider this may be worthwhile to just consider whether or not it would be beneficial to seek input from CCG.
Another option I might throw out there, and I think it's perfectly fine to suggest that to council, but it strikes me as this is a heavy technical document that really the city engineer is the, forgetting the other hat title he wears, but the OES director essentially.
Right.
And so he's intimately involved. And so it might be something that we bring directly to him and say, in the next update with the county, if you see fit to bring this forward to the group. So that's another way to do it, is from the staff's side of that. But either way, it's.
I think I'd rather go at it from the council because then it's not one person's decision. And I understand his expertise, his being Randy Bro, I assume you're referencing. And he may say, no, no, I know all this stuff. But I'd just like to put it on a level where the council at least has the opportunity to think about it and they may decline. But it gives them another option to think about. Because much like city staff and the commissions, we think of things that maybe you don't. And so CCG may think of things that a city engineer wouldn't. So that opportunity is there. If they choose not to pursue it, that's okay, too. But it just gives them something to think about. Yes, no, commissioners? Yes, okay.
Okay.
All right, so could we have a motion, please? You need a motion to approve GPA dash two dash one eight?
Did you want to make the motion to?
No, with a suggestion to council to consider, not as part of that approval, but dovetailing with it, a suggestion to the council to consider possibility of soliciting input and suggestions from CK in the future.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we adopt resolution GPA dash two dash one eight with the additional recommendation to the city council that they consider input from CCG.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, workshop, overview of adopted general plan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is just another one of the series of ongoing workshops we've had regarding various issues of interest to the Planning Commission and your day-to-day workings. You know, we did a fairly focused and directed workshop on the housing element some time ago. And this, you know, we did a little bit of a very brief overview of the general plan in the context of framing for that. And as soon as Ken can find this presentation, we'll go ahead and get rolling with it. And again, some of it is something we talked about, again, an overview of what the general plan is. It's kind of, it's a requirement of the state of California that each municipality have a general plan. It really does express the community's development goals and embody public policy relative to distribution of future land uses. No, that's not it. Anyway, I'll keep talking merrily ahead and interrupt me with anything you want to know or ask. And if push comes to shove, we can, we can get you a paper copy of the slides and do that if we can't find these in a short order.
I have just kind of a general question around the requirement at the state level for having general plans and then how that translates to the, you know, local jurisdictional authority. Is it purely by putting something up to a vote for the public to make changes to the general plan? Or does the council have legal authority to make recommendations through some sort of public consensus process? So I guess what I'm asking, can there, are there ways that municipalities change a general plan through their own actions within a city council format? Or does it have to go through a, you know, voting process?
That's a very good question. And under the government code, the legislative body, which has, which is the city council, has the legal authority to adopt the general plan. The city council may choose to put something on the ballot, as historically has happened in Brisbane over time or in certain instances, but there's no legal requirement to do so. That is a choice of the council. State law actually does make it very clear, it's the legislative bodies, you know, discretion and their authority to make that decision.
Okay, interesting.
In dovetailing what Commissioner Gomez has said, have there been instances, at least in Brisbane, where a change to the general plan was initiated by the public, the residents? That in turn was brought to the council that you can think of, has that ever happened? I can't think of an example, that was part of what he asked.
There are a couple of things, one is certainly a property owner has the legal right to ask the city to make an application or request to amend the general plan as it pertains to their property. Typically, if it's a matter of broader policy, the council will typically be the body that, that initiates an amendment. They may not, they won't direct the outcome, they'll say, well, we want this, you know, we would like you to look, typically refer to the planning commission, some particular issue, look at these policies, give us a recommendation back relevant to the general plan. And whether that's, you know, what might drive the councils to do that, certainly community interest, community concern would logically be a, uh, a driver of the council wanting to look at certain components or elements of a general plan. I'm not aware of any formal sort of petition process where the citizens have, have, you know, requested formally certain elements of the general plan be amended, but, um, you know, historically, I don't know, I'm certainly. Mr. Miller, uh, former mayor and former council member has a much longer history here than I do. And he, he might be able to fill in some gaps if you're interested in the, some of the historic perspective.
Mr. Miller, would you like to fill in some blanks for us?
Hope you don't mind, um, this is something that Mr. Sewicki certainly knows. But when the council passes the general plan, which they have the authority to do, it's a legislative action. All legislative actions are subject to referendum. And that's what happened to the nineteen ninety-four general plan. It was passed by the council, there was a successful petition for referendum. And so there had to be a vote. Now, the council had the option to say, okay, we'll go along with the, with the petitioners and we'll do something else. Or they could say, we're gonna fight this referendum and we're gonna go to the vote of the people. And with, that's the option that that council took. And I was a member of that council, so I have some personal historical experience there. And so there was a referendum, uh, there was a, a public debate over whether or not what the council was doing was appropriate. And what the council did that time, and this is again historical, is they decided that in order to find out what the public really felt about what the public policy should be, they hired a survey firm from San Francisco State University. So they got the best professionals they could for the best price and they did actually a door to door survey. I mean, they really went, they went, they didn't do it over the mail or email, of course, email didn't exist then. And they actually hired people to go door to door and showed them maps and said, you know, cause in those days you say, okay, so what would you like to do with the Baylands? And you'd be surprised how many people say, the what? Yep, they never heard of the Bay, you know, so we had maps and we took it to all the various individual households. And so we got a really complete survey of all of the interests of the members of the public. And then we promised the public that that's what would go into the general plan. And so when the referendum came up, we could make the argument that we put in the general plan what the public told us to put in there through a public survey.
Is that survey, uh, a historical record in the form of some sort of executive summary? Or was it just assembled, taken all the data points came in and then that's what kind of was articulated in the general plan? Or is there some like separate report from that survey work? And that's just a general curiosity?
Well, the questions were constructed so that they would feed into the, the formulation of the programs and policies of the general plan.
Got it, okay.
And then that report was made and it was clear where people stood on various items. And that was why there, there was a decision made to say, no housing in the Baylands. Because over sixty percent of the people felt that it wasn't a good idea, this is in nineteen ninety-four. And unfortunately, we didn't ask at that time, and we tried to correct that in a more recent survey. We didn't ask them why they felt that way, which, you know, in retrospect, you know, was a mistake. Because my presumption and the presumption of a lot of others, but it's a presumption, it's not a fact. Is that most people felt that way because they just felt it was not safe for people to live there. But that's a presumption, it's not a fact. And we, more recently, we, we, we tried to adjust for that omission by the questions in the more recent survey. In which we did ask people, okay, so why are you holding this position? What's, what's behind your yes or no? And then you find out more and then you can do a better job of forging the general plan.
Okay.
So that, that's the most, I think, interesting historical event regarding what you're asking.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. So one other thing then in answer to your question, Ken, um, and Ken provided that. A resident could ask for a change in the general plan, a resident and/or a property owner, which you saw with UPC in the Baylands requested a change in the general plan. Staff, are, are you ready to go?
I think you're on, should be on your screen as well. These again are some of the overviews from state law, what the general plan is in terms of globally. It's important that state law defines certain elements and also defines that there has to be integrated internally consistent and compatible. Or, you know, so again, there's an issue of internal consistency that's always at issue with the general plan. And then the general plan, as we've talked about in previous just workshops, is, is sort of the, the top of the hierarchy. You know, zoning has to be consistent with the general plan, land use decisions have to be consistent with zoning in the general plan. So at the sort of the, the highest order of sort of land use policy direction is the general plan. And everything underneath that must be consistent with that document as well. So these are again, some of just sort of the overview of big picture, what state law requires in terms of a general plan. The city's general plan is organized, again, the state sets forth a number of mandatory elements. Our general plan actually includes, uh, more elements than the, the minimum or the mandatory. And there's no, there's no prohibition on that, the city can add whatever elements it chooses to. Some of ours combine, for example, noise and air quality are discrete state requirements. Here they're included in our health and safety element. So, you know, there are ways that we've parsed, um, the general plan that complies with state law, but it's not literally following the categories or organization that, that state law specifies. And we, and we have that kind of latitude and flexibility in terms of what we've done and what we might want to do in the future as well. So, yeah, this is just to indicate which elements are, are mandatory and which were kind of more optional that the city chose to, to adopt as part of that. And again, the format, and you all have access to the general plan, both online and in paper copies. You'll see it formatted with goals and then typically a narrative description of existing conditions. And then often there's a listing of policies by either subject or by sub area. And then a listing of programs that are suggested to implement the, uh, general plan policies. Not every, um, policy has a list of supporting programs. And, um, again, it's going to be just sort of case by case. And there, you know, our general plan is, is quite voluminous, it has a number of policies and programs. You can, we, um, obviously try to, through a typical land use development application where there is a general plan consistency issues, we, we try to highlight those policies and that are germane to the, the matter that's in front of the commission. But we certainly don't do a sort of a, a, for an individual development project. We're not going to make specific references to the four hundred plus policies that are in the general plan. It's, so we really do sort of pare it down to the ones that we feel are most relevant to the application before you. And hopefully the, the general plan programs and policies will ultimately not just regulate development, but hopefully, and a lot of the general plan policies are somewhat aspirational. So ideally, a general plan policies and programs would also align with other kind of city decisions. For example, budgetary decisions the city council might make in terms of choices. If they're items that were high priority or were priority in the general plan or general plan programs. That's a way to sort of lift and elevate that issue to, to potentially get financial, uh, you know, funding from the council if that's considered a, um, an important community value through the general plan. So, you know, whether or not that's done routinely or frequently is, is, um, it, it isn't always the case. But certainly, again, when, when the council is making those kind of decisions, they're often are, you know, there's a discussion of, is it, how, how is the general, how is it relevant to the general plan? Or the general plan's not relevant, that's another issue. But, but certainly I think it's always important to try to use that as a tool to help prioritize. From our, uh, position in terms of land use policy direction. And if there are things the council wants done in the general plan that require funding, that's a, a good way to get to those and for the council to sort, sort through them. And again, uh, Ray gave a, a good history in terms of leading up to the ninety-four general plan. It was last comprehensively updated in ninety-four. It was envisioned as a document that would be revisited in ten years or so. And it was two thousand four, two thousand five, they suggested revisiting it. That process did commence in two thousand five. However, you know, with the activity on the Baylands, um, which, if you think of how much development potential the city has, the Baylands is the bulk of that future development. It was decided that for a variety of reasons that that land use decision-making process should play out before the city finalized the, uh, the comprehensive, uh, general plan update. So that update has essentially been, been, um, on the shelf for a few years. And, uh, again, my expectation is that once the Bayland process plays out going forward, that the city will want to revisit the general plan comprehensively again. Uh, there are a lot of issues that I think the council at the time and the community at the time was very, had a lot of foresight, especially in terms of environmental sensitivities and, and ecological and, and economic sustainability. But I think the fields have really advanced since then. And I think there's a lot more policy work that could be, and, you know, I would expect that communities' values around sustainability might be better articulated in a rework of the general plan under today's situation. Greenhouse gas emissions, uh, climate change, those are all issues that really weren't at the fore when the ninety-four plan was adopted. So I think there is going to be the need to address, you know, issues that have come up since that plan was adopted. And it was very, a lot of foresight, but again, you can only anticipate so many things in the future. And it, it'll be time to take a fresh look at that, I think. And I think as we've talked about, the commissioner's question, Commissioner Gomez's question about amendments to the plan. Yes, they have been done, um, you know, we've done multiple housing element cycles since the ninety-four plan was adopted. Several years ago, we did a, a pretty extensive circulation element, uh, update to reflect state law requirements for complete streets. We'll be doing some more of that related to green infrastructure and green streets, um, probably in the next year or so. I think we're going to be doing some more updates to the plan. Parkside was another, um, planning program that had some implications on the general plan. So the, the plan is have been, although it hasn't been comprehensively adopted or updated, you know, we have taken bits and pieces of it over time that often state law will make, you know, obligate us to, to make updates. So we've done a lot of those and also policy initiatives like Parkside, for example. And then the latest and obviously the most top of mind here is the GP one dash eighteen, which was the Bay, the Baylands specific, our general plan amendment that was approved by a measure JJ in November. And that's the latest, um, general plan amendment, actually, well, except for the one Ken is moving forward with tonight. And that will go forward to the council probably next month. Again, this was the general plan land use diagram pre the approval of measure JJ. So again, again, the city's divided up into a series of sub areas, um, with typically a land use kind of identifier. So like Crocker Park is the sub area, TC would stand for trade commercial. Let's see, it's another one, Northeast Ridge, there's going to be a PD type designation, Guadalupe Hills. This means, um, planned development. Sierra Point is again the geographic descriptor and then you get into, um, commercial retail office as CRO. So that's kind of how the general plan is organized in terms of, if you're trying to figure out on a particular piece of property, what the general plan is telling you, you know, you would want to look at those two primary areas in terms of from a very broad overview. One is the land use category, if it's trade commercial, there's going to be a narrative text in the general plan that speaks to what trade commercial is envisioned to be in, you know, very broad, general terms. And then there may be another set of policies that are unique to a specific sub area. So Sierra Point will have a set of sub area policies, Central Brisbane has policies that are directed at the sub area, et cetera. And so again, that's from a, a user, you know, if you're trying to sort of navigate the general plan, that's, that's probably the most obvious way and I think the most direct. Certainly there are going to be other issues in, in other elements, the circulation element or the public safety element. Typically those are a little, they're not quite as direct, those are sometimes broader in terms of their scope and they're, they're citywide to some extent. They may not have the same direct implications on a physical piece of land that, that we would see, you know, through the planning process and that we'd be focusing on from a land use perspective. So we tend to focus, uh, because of the way the policies are written, on the land use element and the sub area policies as being the, the drivers when we're kind of looking at general plan consistency issues. And again, please interrupt me with any questions you might have or just show me you're still awake or.
Could you, for the benefit of all the commissioners and anyone at home, could you please point out what our sub areas are in Brisbane?
Okay, the sub areas, uh, which are all the, the broader text in there. There's Beatty, there's Baylands, there's Northwest Bay Shore, Guadalupe Hills, Northeast Bay Shore, Northeast Ridge, Crocker Park, the quarry, which is actually in the county, it's not in the city of Brisbane. But we do plan for our, what's called our sphere of influence. That's again, a requirement of state law that we plan for the sphere of influence. Then we have Central Brisbane, um, Brisbane Acres, Southwest Bay Shore, Southeast Bay Shore, Sierra Point, um, the lagoon. And then other areas are identified as, you know, some of the open spaces are shown as PFPs or open space. You know, like in the Northeast Ridge, there's, well, it's in with the sub area, but then you have the land use descriptor of open space and residential or, or land use, uh, planned development and open space. So, so, you know, again, if anyone has any question about any of those descriptors or titles. Uh, and then there's obviously open space that, that isn't necessarily, it has a geographic component, but, but our open spaces are probably defined a little more generically for the most part on, on these maps.
And John, could you also just, um, bring up to date the fact that the planning commission, um, actually changed the zoning on several of these sub, sub areas in the last year or two?
We can, I, I'm.
I, I don't mean in detail, just the fact that the reason that was done and that it was actually done.
Uh, the, the recent thing we did, um, and I didn't really list it on the, the, uh, the listing of recent amendments. There are a couple, one is the creating the descriptor for Parkside, which is hard to read on that map. It's that sort of brown strip near Crocker Park, uh, the south end of Crocker Park, uh, that was Parkside. And the other related to that Guadalupe Hills area, we, Northwest Bay Shore used to be a, a much larger, used to take the Guadalupe Hills, Northwest Bay Shore and a portion that was now moved to Crocker Park, TC. We did some reconfiguration of, of the, the land use categories to more closely reflect the differences in land. land use categories to more closely reflect the, um, differences in land use. You know, you have some, some vacant, uh, undeveloped property that's privately held that had development potential, still has a development potential. It was lumped in with what is basically the Martin Substation, for example. And to have a, a land use category that's trying to generically address how both of those areas are used or might be used in the future, didn't make a lot of sense to us. So we, we sort of parsed out those two different areas to reflect the fact that they are very different from both their current and anticipated future land use. Um, and then what, what the chair's getting at too is, you know, in that hierarchy, when you amend the general plan or the zoning, that has to be consistent to, with the general plan. So if you're going to change general plan categories, typically you're going to have to modify the zoning to reflect whatever you've done with the general plan. And that was something we did. Sometimes we'll do them kind of hand in glove. You'll do, um, propose a general plan amendment and the zoning concurrently. That may be one way of doing it. It might be something where you go to the council first on the general plan, make sure they're comfortable with the policy language, and then you come up with a set of standards and zoning regulations to implement that general plan category. So it's been done both ways. With those, I think we brought them forward concurrently because we had a pretty solid idea of what we were trying to achieve. And, and that's how we did it in those particular areas. Uh, I did want to kind of jump forward though, because this is, you know, I, I kind of specifically put this as a twenty seventeen zoning map, which would have been prior to the passage of measure JJ. And then when that measure was passed, it did amend the general plan in a few ways, some that are visual. And we can start with the, sort of the, the visual aspect of that. Um, probably better if the two were compared, but, well, let's go back. Even though there's scales, we'll apologize for the difference in scale. So you see the baylands there, right? You see Beatty, Baylands, and you had Northeast Bayshore in that area that, that's sort of bounded by Bayshore Boulevard on the west and Highway one oh one on the east and the lagoon, just for argument's sake. It's a little bigger than that, but that's the general area. The county city line limit to the north, which is where that Beatty, uh, line cuts across. So from a general plan mapping, uh, implications of the passage of, um, JJ were to slightly extend the Beatty sub-area. Uh, it's actually been elongated slightly to the south from what the, the prior general plan showed. Um, then it specifically added a component. It, it also deleted the North, um, East Bayshore sub-area, which is the Industrial Way subdivision or Industrial Park. And it, that, that is absorbed into the Bayland sub-area now. So we've eliminated a prior general plan sub-area that's been absorbed into the Baylands. And then you'll see that the Baylands PD is retained with some, uh, very specific descriptors as to areas where residential is prohibited and permitted. So, um, we do have actually online the, the entire comprehensive city general plan map does reflect these changes. Uh, so that's, that's information has been disseminated and is available for the public. And if you were to go and look online at this map, I've just kind of, we just sort of extracted that portion, but, or blew it up, but that's all reflected now currently on the current general plan, uh, mapping that we have. Are there any questions about, um, specifically with the mapping changes that associated with, um, with, uh, GP one eighteen or measure JJ? Okay. Um, just so you know, I mean, there's the, the Beatty, the, the reason we changed Beatty, that line was to match or best as we could, uh, what the future extension of Geneva Avenue might be. Uh, the idea that that was a very logical boundary between two different sort of land use categories and sub-areas rather. And the fact that Beatty is primarily ecology has a very different land use character and future than certainly the Baylands will have. So wanted to try to recognize that a little more. Um, we felt it was a more logical and, you know, a boundary and planning sort of limits for those two different areas. So aside from the land use programming, um, you know, on these maps, you know, again, here were some of the other pertinent points. It deleted the, um, current general plan prohibition on housing within the Baylands. It authorizes, um, eighteen to twenty-two hundred residential units in that crosshatched area. And what else this slide's going to do, I haven't seen it in so long, but, okay. Allows for six point five million square feet of new commercial development plus five hundred thousand square foot of hotel development. And that could be spread both in the area where residential is prohibited and where residential is permitted. You can still have commercial land use in the area that allows for residential. It's not residential only. So, so that's, there's some flexibility as to how that six point five or seven million square feet is arranged across the property. And as we talked about, adjusted the boundary between Beatty and the Bayland sub-areas. Any other magic? Oh yeah, eliminated Northeast Bayshore, which I, uh, mentioned before. So that's kind of just, uh, jumped ahead of myself there. It also included a number of policies and performance standards. And I'm going to have Ken hand out, this is just the text of GP one eighteen. And, uh, I'll get it copied to Ray if I have an extra copy. I'm sure you've seen it, but, um, it's just for your reference. Um, and I wasn't really going to delve into it in great detail, but I'm glad to answer any questions everyone has. I was just going to at a very high level indicate what some of the areas that were addressed in the policies and performance standards. And I'm sure from seeing your various, uh, ballot materials, you probably saw a lot of this in, in various forms. But I'll just kind of, at a high level, just kind of walk through some of this stuff. And again, it establishes standards related to site remediation and landfill closure and, and basically milestone that those sort of plans need to be approved before the next effort of, of specific plan development happens. Uh, there's a requirements, you know, getting to securing a water supply, I think as we've all learned through the EIR process, there's not, city doesn't have a water supply to support that development, and that needs to be, uh, identified. And idea of phasing of the infrastructure improvements and services to make sure that you don't, that, that you provide the infrastructure and whatnot that's, supports the development as it's happening. You don't allow the development and then worry about all the infrastructure or transportation improvements after the fact. And those things all need to be sort of tied together in a irrational way. And again, that's what that gets to. Uh, identification of the power, the project needs to be revenue positive to the city during all phases of the development, you know, through construction and, and following its ultimate build-out. That sustainability principles be, be incorporated into the, uh, subsequent specific plan. Identification and protection of key habitat areas such as Ice House Hill, the habitat near the lagoon. Uh, restoration of the Roundhouse, which is a designated historic reset, resource on the National, um, Register of Historic Places. And clearly concerns with flooding on that property and not only just on current, uh, hundred-year storm or whatnot, but actually factoring in for future sea level rise to make sure this site is resilient over time. It's not meeting a standard. And then ten years from now, um, you know, we're in an issue of flood, flood concerns because sea level rise or bay rise wasn't taken into consideration. So again, that's a very important factor. There are requirements for soil testing of materials that, uh, were on that site if they're going to be moved around, uh, from areas either off-site or brought onto the site. Materials need to be tested before they're deposited there. And there are a couple, these are sort of the next steps in terms of the, what you call the implementation, um, if, if that's going to occur. There is a requirement that the, um, a specific plan be, be adopted by the city council that's consistent with the provisions of, of GP one dash eighteen. And that all has to be done prior to any sort of final development of the site. Um, you know, I've just kind of highlighted a few of the bullet points that are going to be a precursor or part of that development, uh, or that planning process. You know, there's going to be another round, I think, of community engagement and sort of input and participation in terms of components of the specific plan or what the city and community wants to see embedded in that specific plan. The specific plan will be subject to review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And there'll be, again, a series of formal public hearings when the plan is submitted and prepared and submitted. And again, the, the commission in particular, the, the sequoia aspect and the public hearings, that will be, and you'll be front and center during those particular processes. The community engagement typically doesn't happen in a formal planning commission setting. It's typically something they try to, try to do in a, a more informal community, um, setting. So, I mean, I don't think that's all been determined, but that would be pretty common. I mean, that's happened before in other cases. And, but you'll be seeing, you know, when it gets to be a formal application, that's really when your, your duties and obligations will, will sort of kick in under, under, uh, and how the city does our planning. So that'll be your responsibility. There are a couple of other things I wanted to bring to the commission's attention right now is, um, you know, as we talked about, there are multiple elements of this general plan. And there's, you know, ten chapters and, um, a lot of narrative and a lot of text. And if you'll notice, certain changes that were made to the general plan through the adoption of the ballot measure, through measure JJ, have sort of a ripple effect through other sections of the document. For example, the elimination of the Northeast Bayshore sub-area. Well, there are probably twenty references to the Northeast Bayshore sub-area in the general plan. And so there's going to be a general plan amendment that basically is focused on eliminating those internal inconsistencies to bring the rest of the general plan into consistency, what was approved under, you know, GP one eighteen by JJ. So that is something that, that you, that you as a commission will probably see sooner than certainly a subsequent specific plan or some other planning activities related to the Baylands development. Because we do need to, uh, you know, it's primarily a word smithing exercise. Uh, you know, once you've, there's a narrative, there's a, you know, a description of what the Baylands is. Well, now that we've incorporated the industrial park, you need to change that text. So it reflects, again, the accurate setting, acreages change, et cetera, et cetera. So those are all sort of internal consistency amendments that you'll see as a, a broader package. And it may, it may seem quite large, you know, and I don't want anyone to be intimidated by it because of the fact that there's so many word changes throughout the document. And we'll probably want to present it to you in a pretty full form. So you're not trying to read little snippets, even though it'll only be only changing a snippet of here and there, you understand the full context. So you may get a document that's a little more voluminous than the actual substance of the changes. But I did want to kind of put that on the commission's radar that that is something you'll be seeing. That's, that's a follow-up to the approval of, uh, of GP one eighteen. And then lastly, and again, this hasn't come up probably with this commission, but I think there's always, in, in the Baylands process, the idea that ecology would be handled and be, being processed separately from the Baylands. And that indeed is still the case. Uh, the, kind of creating that dividing line between Beatty and the Bayland sub-areas probably even further makes it even easier to sort of disentangle or separate those two processes. And I don't, I don't really have any information as to the ecology process of when that might kick off or, or, um, move forward. There may be, um, some text amendments within the Beatty sub-area that we might want to do, um, as a precursor to any sort of development application being made by ecology too. Because, uh, some of that wording is a little, I don't, I don't know that it reflects the idea that, that what that's property's longer-term future expected land use, uh, is going to be. So I think we would want to look at wording that's a little more, um, definitive and, and perhaps, uh, look at some of the processing required to move forward with that. But that'll be a whole separate conversation and discussion. Again, this is just something to, so you're aware of. And if you're very curious about any of these things, I encourage you to dive into the general plan as it currently exists, get some context. Sometimes that's a little difficult without something in front of you that you're kind of comparing it to. But, you know, I leave that really up to you to your own best judgment of how you can kind of comprehend this. Uh, and certainly, we're always open. Staff's always available. If you have questions when you read something in the general plan, or you're not really clear what it means or anything, you know, I always encourage you to, to contact me or staff and, and, you know, walk through some of these, um, technical issues if you have them. So that, I believe, concludes my quick and dirty summary of, um, general plan overview. And I'm glad to entertain any questions the commission has.
Thank you. Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Gooding? Commissioner Saiso? Commissioner Gomez?
No, thank you.
I have none. I, I see a question from the audience. Mr. Miller, do you have something you'd like to add to the mixture here?
I, I'd like to make, uh, just one point that John and Ken have heard many times before. Uh, I spent, uh, twelve years on the Open Space and Ecology Committee. Uh, and a part of the outcome of the early years of that committee was the, uh, Open Space Plan, uh, which was adopted by the city coun- council way back in two thousand. And in the period of two thousand five, two thousand six, when we started to revise the general plan but never fully implemented, uh, there was a lot of work put into how to incorporate the Open Space Plan into the general plan. But that's never been formalized. And so when I hear all this discussion about making all these things internally consistent and changing things, I just would like to bring into the conversation that I hope a part of that internal consistency is actually formally incorporating the Open Space Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. John, you want to address that? How does, what's the mechanism for that happening?
Oh, well, uh, it's a really good point. And I think it's, you know, again, hindsight being twenty twenty, it probably would have been useful to incorporate it when it was adopted. But, you know, I know there are reasons why it wasn't done in that point in time. Um, so we just have to, I mean, basically, you know, we would be amending, I assume it would primarily just be the open space conservation element. So it would be a discreet, like you had an amendment right here for this LHMP. It's not quite analogous, uh, because we may not want to incorporate it by reference, or maybe we do want to incorporate it by reference. We haven't really talked about how that would be done. But, you know, there's, there's, um, you know, an amendment process that we would come forward to the, to the commission. And, you know, it'll be a publicly noticed, public process and you get public input and see how we end up. I think it's a really good idea that sort of sitting out there not in a regulatory standpoint is, uh, or formally recognized as part of the general plan is not optimal. I agree it should be incorporated.
So, since we're active in this process of understanding the general plan, the history, we just approved the, you know, this procedural, uh, act to, to, to add on to the, um, you know, health and safety element. Could we make a, um, a suggestion or a request towards council to kind of bring this up and kind of, and then bring this to us from a, from a procedural perspective, or is this something...
Which, to bring what up?
The, the open spa, the integration of the open space.
Um, I don't, I don't think that would necessarily require council action. I mean, to me, it becomes a question of, of timing and priority.
Okay.
Uh, but, you know, certainly, the council adopted that. The general plan has been adopted by the council. If, in a review of that, you know, from the city attorney, from staff, we feel there's the need to, to sort of bring these together, and that's beneficial for the city. You know, we have the ability to initiate those kind of, or request the council to do that. So, uh, I, I don't, I don't see, um, the need right now, because I think it's a very good idea. And I think we're, I'd rather probably spend our time figuring out how to do that as opposed to, and once we're further along, I'd, I'd, you know, we could formally initiate it or what with the council. But I think the heavy lifting is probably just figuring out how to accomplish that.
Okay. Well, I defer to your knowledge and expertise in that area. Okay. Well, I defer to your knowledge and expertise in that area.
And, and, you know, we'll have the minute record here and the notes that, again, that's something that we would consider a, a very appropriate step to be taken and would devote the staff time to look into that.
John or Ken, what, just so we can start doing homework early if we're so inclined, what would you anticipate being the first couple of items that'll be brought before this commission relative to JJ or, or GP 118?
Well, the first would be this internal consistency, general plan amendment.
Right.
So, you know, if you look at the areas that have been affected, which would be primarily, if you look there, if you were to search, for example, for northeast Bay Shore, that, that language is all going to go away in some fashion. It's going to be moved. The Baylands, you can, if you look at the text of JJ, you'll be looking at some point, and you look at the Bayland subarea policies. You know, you'll be, that's what's going to be, most of those are going to get embedded in the Bayland subarea policies. So to the extent you're more familiar with the land use and subarea policies related to the Baylands as they currently exist, would probably be useful to understand. It's, because that's, that's where the bulk of the amendment happens, a little bit in the land use element. And that's probably another good place to spend some time. And in the subarea, which is, I think, chapter nine or subarea, twelve, sorry.
This really does sound like just getting, getting the words in the right places.
Yeah, that is. But, I mean, there is sort of a holistic, and this all has to kind of hang together sort of holistically too. And that's always a risk of somebody like me is I, you start looking at words and you, you fix words here and you fix words here. And at the end of the day, does the whole thing hang together as a true description of, of the intent and the vision? Or we've just made a bunch of editorial changes that don't really tell a story of what, what the future intent is? So I'm really cognizant of, you know, it's, that's where we kind of start is with the, the grind of making sure the words are right. And then we'll kind of put it through that sieve of making sure it tells kind of a more robust story of what the intent. And, and so someone could use this document that, you know, in a more meaningful way than, 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 you know, making sure all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Then whatever we, we do or suggest will be, will be approved by the council.
Yes, you make, you make recommendations to the council on these kind of legislative actions.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
When there's a general plan change that changes the nature of a piece of land, for example, let's say we're going to put residential on the Baylands. Are there like engineering changes that have to be made from like different areas in Brisbane? Like if something's built on liquefaction versus built on, built on mountainous areas? And how does, how does that all get changed?
I mean, there's typically, I mean, there's a whole sort of, again, if the, you'd almost, if you want to look at it as sort of a series of dominos, the general plan is the big domino that starts everything else, right? Because once you've changed the general plan, you know, then the next level of hierarchy is the zoning. And the zoning starts getting into the development standards of, okay, it's setbacks and building heights and those kind of issues. And then you get into, you know, defining land uses, then you're going to have, that trickles down even further in terms of entitlements, like mapping that you might do to create lots for homes or whatever you're doing, or creating lots to be sold for commercial purposes. And then you're really talking about at the end of the game, there's, you know, the building code issues because there's, the building code is not, you know, it's analogous to zoning where you have different kind of occupancy types. And the code requirements for residential occupancy types have its own set of sort of code standards and engineering standards for those kind of occupancy types versus a manufacturing building, you know, that, those kind of. So, so that all actually plays out at the very end of the line. The building, the permitting requirements are very different based on the final land use program. That is all reflected, you know, certain things, you know, obviously, to engineer a, a one-story wood frame building on an area subject to liquefaction is very different than fourteen-story high-rise, right? So all those things are, again, there's a, there's the context of not only the land use, but the form of the structure, and that will drive a lot of the final design. And same with the circulation and roadways. Or obviously, they're all sort of tied to what kind of land use program and pattern you're, you're supporting.
So that all just does get legislated eventually?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it may not be, a lot of it, like the code is not terribly discretionary. I mean, you may need to do X, Y, and Z in the code. Some of the things will be more, you'll have more discretion as part of a, you know, specific plan. We didn't talk a lot tonight about the specific plan. But, I mean, that's, that's the tool by which, you know, the Baylands development will ultimately be implemented, right? It's going to be a specific plan. And I would envision the, the specific plan for the Baylands will function as both, as its zoning, right? It's going to be translating these higher order general plan policies and directions into something that can be implemented, you know, at a zoning level. You can look in that plan and it's going to say, okay, this district has these kind of development standards and allows this kind of development. And it's going to have these kind of roadways. And that's all going to be, you know, something that, that, in a way, it's more, I think it's, it's good and bad, right? It's more complicated for the commission, but it's also much more holistic, right? You're not, you're not saying, well, okay, I can only look at this piece and I'll worry about these other things later. And, you know, you end up kind of, at that point, sort of, I know commissioners can, sometimes feel they're being piecemealed to death, right? Because, well, you can't talk about that because we don't know what's going to happen there. This, you're going to have a pretty good idea, you know, at a, at a pretty high level, what is this kind of development program and the sense of the scale and character? And, you know, you're going to have things, especially, we haven't talked about this, but we will on other days, there's a lot of state law that relates to the review of residential projects and very much limits discretion of, like, design review discretion. You have to have objective standards. You can't say, ah, that's just, that doesn't fit the community and we don't like it. That's, that's not an objective standard. So, so you'll find that the specific plan will make sure a point of emphasis is having very objective standards that you'll have the opportunity to weigh in on. And that we'll all be in a better position to implement over time. Some, very similar to what we did with Parkside, because we created those same sort of objective standards because we had the same issue. We could not subject Parkside development to a discretionary design permit process. So, so in a way, it, hopefully, will give the commission a little more sort of meat to sort of chew on with this plan, you have a better idea of what you are getting. And it's, it's not going to be maybe higher order policies that, that are really hard to translate and visualize. You know, you get some of these terms that, it may mean something to me sitting here. It might mean something different to you sitting there. And it might be something to somebody else sitting in the audience would interpret the same words as being completely different. We're going to be in a position where we're all, you know, bulk is bulk and height is height and standards are standards in terms of you need to set back this or that for this height. It's all very, you know, quantifiable and, and known by everybody. It's not going to be subject to anybody's discretion later what that meant. You know, what can, a project that fits in with the neighborhood is. Those are the kind of standards that will not be built into a specific plan.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
And I would assume from what Commissioner Patel was asking as well, when considering something like Sierra Point, where there are considerations for the underlying geology, sea level rise, there's been a whole set of engineering standards developed for any project out there. And I would assume the Baylands will have its own unique
Correct.
set of engineering standards which may not be in place yet, but will be.
They will be. And they'll, to some extent, they won't, you know, you won't engineer a project to a hundred percent at a specific plan. But they'll have a, they'll do some level of engineering to support what they want to do in the specific plan. Because it's not going to help them to say, well, we're going to do these kind of buildings over here without understanding the geotechnical implications. Can they do that, for example? You know, it's, it's a kind of a waste of their resources as a developer to speculate on, uninformed speculation as to what they might desire to do versus basing it on some ground truthing of what's practical. And, you know, it won't be engineered a hundred percent, but there will be some, some engineering background to support their planning.
I think perhaps something to consider future in terms of workshops as well, you brought up, which is subjective versus objective. Because we all hear about the San Francisco Planning Commission, which makes very subjective statements. And some other large cities within the peninsula seem to do so as well, which leads someone on our commission to say, we're not doing that. Why are they doing that? So, and, and not, I'm not alluding to the fact that we should, but I think that that might be worthy somehow to incorporate in a future workshop so that we understand what is expected, what parameters of leeway we might have in expressing an opinion, but that what is expected of us in terms of decision-making.
There's a whole process that we're internally going through is, you know, these are not, some of these requirements, especially on review of residential projects, are not new. I mean, there's just, there's been a, a lot higher focus. And so we're looking at a lot of the findings that we, that the commission is obligated to make as part of your approvals of some of these design permits for residential projects, very much with an eye toward being defensible, objective standards that doesn't put anybody at risk, the city at risk of, of, you know, misusing discretion. So, so we're actually have started that process and, you know, we'll be back to this commission with the workshops. Hopefully, in the next, maybe, that could be something that would probably drag out to March. I don't think I could get here before March on that.
Thank you very much. Any other additions? No? Okay. Let's move on then to items initiated by staff.
You both are, you received, I think, they've received notice of a series of different kind of educational opportunities or training opportunities. One is the League Workshop, and I believe that's in Long Beach on March first through third. Does that ring a bell? I don't have the paperwork in front of me. Is that true?
I think it's third through, through six.
Third through six, okay. All right.
Six through eight?
Six through eight, correct.
Okay, yeah, sometime in March. So again, I encourage all commissioners who are interested in attending that. And please let our staff know as soon as possible so we can make those, you know, part of what we do is provide, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of the registration and work with you on lodging and whatnot. So, but we do need to know sooner than later your interest so we can make those plans. And then the local sort of consortium called Twenty One Elements is what a lot of the local planning that happens in San Mateo County that we do for housing and other sort of areas of broader concern. They're scheduling a couple sessions, free sessions. Like one, I think, is the end of January, I believe, a fifth, whatever, the fifth, it's at the thirty-first, I believe. And another one in April. And again, I'd encourage, you know, it's, one, it's local. Two, it, it, that is very much focused, you know, it's designed so you would be able to interact with your peers in other commissions in the county. So again, very focused and specific. So I really would encourage you to take advantage of those opportunities. Please let us know at your earliest convenience. All we have to do is basically RSVP for you and, and that's, that's a very easy lift. I don't know where that one is. I think one's in San, at the San Mateo Library.
I think they're both San Mateo.
Yeah. So they're very close too, so.
I already RSVP'd.
Okay, great.
On my own.
On your own, okay. And if, if anybody has, that would be really good to know. So, I mean, I can check through them, but it would be good to know. So I'll note that. And I think that is all I have.
Okay. Items initiated by the commission. I have a, a question to start that, and then maybe someone else will want to jump in. The report from the Tree Subcommittee, could you give us an update? What happened to that? That was on, I believe, the December thirteen agenda?
I didn't recall that we actually got it to the agenda, but I guess we did.
No, I think I brought it up at the end. I don't know if
Oh.
Actually, formally on the agenda, I think when we were closing, it was a
And we were thinking that it might be.
It was kind of bringing it back to see, because I had gotten, just, I had gotten very busy.
Okay.
So I have a number of written comments from Barbara Ebel, who's the, the member from OSEC. And she requested actually that we have a, a regrouping of that subcommittee. And so actually, I was going to talk to Commissioners Gooding and Gomez after to just give them a tee up to that. But I guess I'll do it here is that, that I'll have something coming out to the subcommittee with probably early next week to, to essentially get some information out to them in terms of what the comments were and, and look to schedule that meeting hopefully later this month if we can. But, so we'll, we'll be coming back around. She had some comments and wanted to discuss those with the group.
So the subcommittee is still open, still active, and hasn't completed what they were working on and others?
Yep.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to that?
I think that's, that's, that's a accurate characterization. And thank you, Ken, for continued diligence.
Okay. One other thing I wanted to bring up on this, and maybe it's premature, but the last meeting when I was here in November, I think, was it twenty-seventh or twenty-ninth? The project that we approved for Sierra Point, we had a small discussion about waste, wastewater, rainwater capture. And it seems like we don't have in Brisbane any kind of ordinance about that with regard to commercial, residential, maybe I'm wrong in making that statement. I wondered if in the same realm where we partnered with Open Space, if Open Space would want to, if the commissioners would agree and with staff input, partner again with Open Space to investigate possibilities for recycled and/or rainwater capture, residential and/or commercial? Since if that is not part of our code, maybe we should think about that ongoing. And as I, I will also, again, go back to Mr. Swackey. And you pointed out that we don't want to unfairly single out one project over another in pointing these things out. So perhaps this is the time now to start thinking about this. So it's no mystery going forward if we say, you know, we should start looking at ways not to be, what's the word I want? Not to be heavy-handed on people from a financial standpoint or an engineering standpoint, but that we should look at some practical ways that maybe they should be required. In that solar, I believe, is now a mandated component in California on new residential. So maybe rainwater, even though it's been raining a lot. I know it's hard to believe we may have a drought this year. But you can expect a drought in the future in another year, I'm sure. So this is not an agendized topic. I'm just bringing it up. And if there's other interest, if other commissioners would want to weigh in. And I, I would like staff input on that as well.
So I have a question. Why does that have to go to Open Space? Why can't we just make, why can't we do it here?
We could. The Open Space and Ecology Committee seems to have contributed a lot to sustainability practices. They may know things we don't know. That I think their input, since they have been geared in that direction, they've written a lot of the practices adopted, may actually be beneficial. There will be things that we don't know about that they do, and it would just save time.
Well, I would suggest we, you know, if it's the wish of the commission, we would agendize this. The staff part of that would be, we would, a lot of this is going to fall under the purview of the Public Works Department. So I'd like to, you know, I think we'd want to do the research to understand what kind of the, the, the current sort of legal and policy direction that the city has, if any. And then that would maybe inform where you want to go with that. But, and again, if there's sort of policy guidance that some other body like OSEC has already undertaken or something, that, share that with you if it exists. I don't know if it does. So we would do some research and bring you that material if you want this agendized.
And, and part of the timeliness on this as well is that there, it appears will be more and more projects coming up, obviously the baylands, obviously Sierra Point, and if going forward were to do this, it seems like it would be good to get it going now, so.
Yeah, and I think I brought the issue up, actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think it is more than prudent that we look at kind of broader leadership in the areas of water efficiency, water conservation, water storage, being that we are dependent on the hetch, hetchy system, and you look at the development of the baylands currently, the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, that there, there isn't a solution for what the water footprint, and I use the term footprint, meaning the amount of water that would be needed on an annual basis for the expected operation based upon the building use types, that that's still a big question mark, let alone, you know, I have a lot of knowledge of how much water is used within the biotech industry, and, you know, we've got those big developments happening on Sierra Point. Couple that with potentially more cannabis activities, I think there's, while they're not doing cultivation, there's a water footprint there, and so I think we do need to be representing leadership in the city, and, and just trying to figure out how we grapple with that without a heavy hand, but collaborate with other people that have tried to grapple with this from a public policy perspective, and, and see what we, what we can come up with that is reasonable, and, and so, I'm just, I'm bringing it up, because I think it's something where we do need to have some forward thinking.
And, and personally speaking, just for me, I, I'm not looking for massive sweeping change, but a start.
Yeah.
Some sort of a basis, small measures to begin with, with the idea of what, what else is possible for the future, but what can we, what can we feasibly think of immediately or in the near future that is possible without, without huge implications?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can circle back to that.
Yeah, so if that's a consensus, we'll go ahead and schedule that, it may take, again, a couple meetings to actually gather some of these materials and frame the issue, and maybe it's beginning more of a dialogue, because the whole issue can be quite, you know, it's, it's one thing to kind of focus on something like rainwater capture, water footprint of sort of future development, and city water supply are issues that are, you know, much broader, obviously, and, you know, where, where the commission's time is maybe most effective, I think it's something we'll all have to kind of tease out, because, you know, obviously, the city's water guarantees through, through Bauska and through hetch, hetchy water are something that this commission won't have, but have a lot of ultimately say in, but it maybe is good context for you in terms of these discussions, so. We have to see what information's out there, and, and maybe then we'll pare down to how you want to kind of focus your efforts, so it is, again, something that you can actually achieve, achieve, right, and get some, some goal accomplished as opposed to getting tangled up in what are some very complicated regional and ecological issues.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have something to bring up? No? Okay. A question, the appeals process on what we approved tonight, since it is not really a plan for a specific property, do we actually need to read appeals process on this?
It is technically appealable, so yes, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure. So anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the City Council, except where specified otherwise, appeals shall be filed with the city clerk not later than 15 calendar days following the Planning Commission's decision. Exclusions to the 15-day filing period include the following, appeals shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the Planning Commission's action for use permits and variances, and 10 calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. And you can contact city clerk for information. All right, our next regular meeting is Thursday, January 24th, 2019, at 7:30 PM, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to that next meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.